This time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this can item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Parks and Recreation Open Space Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes before the commission for consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the chair, please step to the mic at the podium and speak to into the microphone stating and spelling your name. Are there any public comments not for items that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the committee, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Any questions or from the commissioners? Okay, from the public? This is this means being zoomed attended, but not they cannot, we don't need to ask for comments by zoom.
No, no zoom.
Okay, thank you.
It's being shown.
Call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
In a roll call, please.
Commissioner Collinon.
Yes.
Commissioner Isetta.
Yes.
Youth member Melinter.
Yes.
Commissioner Mizuraka.
Aye.
Commissioner Roush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Tolbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Wellander.
Yes.
Chair Donnelly.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up is the regular calendar Parks Recreation Commission. The first item is request for tree removal at 542 Estee Madera Drive. Ashley Cotter and well first from tell us what we're going on with this application.
We've only received one tree removal permit since our last Parks Recreation Open Space Committee meeting for 542 Estee Madera, and this is a request to remove a single coast redwood from the front yard setback. The tree is in excellent health with no structural issues, however, there are numerous issues being caused by the significant root root growth of the tree and the overall placement of the tree near the structure of the home. The sidewalk is being damaged in a number of areas. Sewer downfall line from the house to the street is clogged by root growth and has to be cleaned out several times a year. Proximity to the tree of the house proximity of the tree to the residence can easily cause significant damage to the foundation. And while no signs of damage were observed during the arborist evaluation, there is a risk of damage being done due to the location if the tree was to remain there and continue to grow over time. The floors of the residence are pulling apart at three different locations, which can be attributed to extensive root growth. This is not verified during the arborist evaluation, however, it is very likely that the root damage is what's causing these deficiencies. The tree itself is about 50 years old with a trunk diameter of 75 inches. Unfortunately, there's no practical mitigation measures to control or contain the extensive root growth. The species of tree has a very shallow and extensive root system. And so at this time, staffs recommending approving the removal of the tree of the permit and then whatever replacement trees with the Parks Recreation and Open Space Committee would recommend at this time.
After any any comments or questions from commission on this?
Did John Mizerv, yeah, you took a look? Yeah, thanks.
We have your report, John. Is there a public comment on this? Let's bring it back to further discussion from the commission. I would like to know more, I know I saw this, I mean, it's an incredibly healthy redwood tree. It's a pain painful to see another loss of such a tree in our community. Is what is the offset replacement, if any, that either the city or the owners would be held to for this?
So I think you're talking about what would they require, you know, what size, species, et cetera? So tonight I will be presenting the the new proposed tree list in addition to a couple of comments about the tree ordinance. The tree ordinance talks about, as I think we all know, for every six inches of diameter, six inches and up. Currently, the ordinance talks about replacing with a 15 gallon tree.
Commissioner, can I just interrupt one second? That actually applies to development standard, so it.
Okay, just I'll I'll.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
Continue, yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay. Later on in the ordinance, I did I looked through the whole ordinance and there is language. I'll just tell you this now, there's language in. Get this right. Article five, 12 dot oh eight dot oh five oh, and article nine, which is enforcement, 12 dot oh eight dot one one zero, which gives pros, basically the tree committee, which is what we are. It's up to us to decide what we recommend for replacement. And it the problem with the tree ordinance, one problem that I had was it talks about new development in most places where it lists specifics. But in these two sections, it talks about we get to make a recommendation ourselves. We don't have to defer to anyone else, we just look at the facts. So currently, in the new development section, it talks about a hundred dollars a tree or a hundred dollars per six inches. However, in my discussions with John Mizerv, he said more realistically, it should be $900. Again, this is something I'm going to bring up later. The other thing is that the the penalties for violation are low and the the guide that's used for plant appraisal is from 1992. So I I'm going to bring that up later, but just in looking at what we are going to recommend tonight for this tree, these are things to think about. John, do you have a comment as to what would fit in that area or what would fit on that property or what that maybe the owner said about replacement?
Not redwood.
Right.
I mean, it's a small front yard, but it would accommodate many of the trees on your new list or your new combined list. Something that's not going to get more than 40 feet, 45 feet, I think would be, you know, compatible with the front yard, the sidewalks, the sewer line, all that. So I think there's there's lots of choices there and redwood just wasn't obviously the right choice.
And the other thing was that you your preference is for a 24 inch box rather than a 15 gallon?
That's my preference.
Okay.
Sorry, can you go back and explain the cost to me again, what the hundred versus 900 is?
Sure, let me take my mask off. Currently, the cash in lieu amount, which means if a person's just like, I'm not.
They just want to pay it instead.
If they want to pay it.
Got it.
That's the hundred dollars per six inches of diameter, so divide 75 inches of this tree.
It's twelve and a half.
Right, so that's twelve and a half, but according to John, you know, and again, it sounds like a situation in which a variance might well be in offer. We just, in my opinion, we can't go way low like we did with that situation we had a couple months ago when we brought it way, way, way down, so.
So we're saying to raise it to 900 or keep it at 100?
Well, here's the thing, the this is John's recommendation. I did a little survey of surrounding municipalities, it's above that.
Oh.
Other municipalities do 1,020, a lot of them charge for removal permits. But we're not in the point right now where we're going to redo the whole ordinance, but I'm going to bring up later tonight, talk about the violation penalties and then this cash in lieu amount is just not reasonable. It's a fraction of what it would take to actually ameliorate the loss of this tree.
Yeah, I do think there should be a cap, though, because I think when we get to some of those exorbitant amounts, it does not make sense if someone is really going to be out.
So, okay, I agree, I mean, kind of, we talked about that last time, definitely a variance that we decide. However, the the entire tree ordinance is is going to at some point be redone, obviously, it's really old since it has that 1992 reference. I'm just bringing up later this evening, basically what we're talking about now, like, this is the sort of urgent things that we can do a little appeal to Jennifer Gates, anyway.
But again, for the people requesting the tree, they wouldn't need to pay that if they go and replace it with a 24 gallon tree.
Not one 24 gallon tree.
Twelve.
Twelve 24 gallon trees.
Twelve and a half, yeah.
Yeah, so it it this is another thing where it almost feels like when we receive these removal requests, maybe it could be a rough estimate from from John and or the homeowners together, talking about what their idea is for replacement, so we can sort of figure out how we do this, how we do the variance.
Let me throw one more thing in, just so you have the whole picture. Those folks are probably looking at 12 to 14,000 dollars to have that tree taken down and the help the stump ground out. So, I mean, that that may or may not be a factor in how you look at this, but they're they're already.
Yeah.
They're already going to take a hit, lose the tree and pretty significant cost to get it down, so just just.
That makes, that's super helpful. What what is what else is on the property, how much space is on the property?
It it's a small front yard.
So it's the front yard.
Yeah.
Could they pay to have the trees placed somewhere else in the city, is that part of our?
That's the cash in lieu.
But that's just cash, what if they, because a 24.
Right.
Gallon tree could be less expensive than 900 is what I'm saying.
No, about 250 bucks.
Okay.
What John said was 400 planted. Yeah, so I think 400, 450 planted, and that's wholesale. So there's that's a factor, and then it goes into what needs to be resurrected as the cash fund for this for this process.
Just a comment, we're we're going to have a lot more of these in the coming years with a lot of these redwoods in this area. A lot of them also are going to be dying because of of the way climate is happening. So one of the things I'm curious about relative to this offset and other trees planted is where are we planting them? And how does that direct it relative to the decision to do that? Because if we start having a lot more of these, then it's a situation where we're going to we're going to have to plant a forest somewhere, is my point. And there's not much land in Sonoma to plant them too, so I'm curious about that thought process.
One thing I can comment on, because unfortunately, I know that you you weren't on board when we had the joint tree commission meeting. It is the goal of the city to increase the urban canopy. And also, there was a lot of discussion about planting microforests. So it's the plan, it's in the plan, and we're trying to be sure we don't reduce the number of trees. It is the plan to increase it, but maybe in the case of a certain diameter and above, we could start talking about a system by which we do variances. You know, like, what do you think, John Mizerv? You know what I'm saying, like, last time, the the redwood trees were 36 inch diameter and 60 inch diameter and maybe at a certain place and maybe even with certain species when they get to that level, we develop a system by which we come up with a fair number.
I think you could certainly grade species by how fast they grow. So the redwood you're looking at is 50 years old, it's not that old, but it's gigantic. A pistache or some other ornamental tree would be still very much in scale to that house at 50 years. So, you know, in some ways, it's it's unfair to treat all those trees the same way in terms of mitigation.
Good point.
If that's, I think that's what you're asking.
But I think another point would be that whether the tree is dying or dead too versus a healthy one in this instance, you know, and they're going to have to remove it if it's dead, obviously, and then does that is that where the variance plays into into play as well relative to the decision? Because there's the you're not going to want a dead tree there either.
That's a really good question, and I think it it warrants being included in the variance. The other thing is not everyone nurtures their trees. So that is another thing we're going to be talking about with the variance for the tree ordinance, which is how long are they required? For example, Windsor requires seven years of keeping that tree alive, otherwise, if it dies, you start over, you're seven years with a new tree. You know, it's it's heavy duty, I get it, but I definitely agree that a variance is in order, so.
Let's go back to the, I appreciate this general discussion, I think it's it shades into what we're going to talk about later when we look at how the ordinance, overall tree ordinance is going to be in the process of being revised. And I shared Jeff's concerns, Commissioner Roush's concerns about the number of dying redwood trees in the city. I do think the green infrastructure overlay that if it gets into the general plan will be a great resource for identifying where we can plant more trees in within the city. But let's, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the arborist on removal of this tree and the replacement?
I think we have to come up with the variance first, don't we?
I, let's do, yeah.
Well, currently, is it 100?
Well, according to the ordinance, it's 100 per six inches.
So they would.
But just pardon.
That's new develop.
Right, and so we got to be very careful here about taking the variance for new development and applying it to this particular removal permit. And I just want to clarify, Commissioner Mizuraka, that the section that you referenced earlier, 12 oh eight oh five oh C, is that correct? Yeah, so let me just get to that. I'm I'm going to read it right now. If the tree committee approves an application to alter, remove, or relocate a tree, it shall direct the public works director to issue the permit, subject to such conditions as the committee deems appropriate, which may include the planting of replacement trees. Yeah.
What do you want to, yeah.
Well, we were talking about dollars.
Right.
A while ago, and I just want to clarify that this is what this is the section that you're relying on to establish the number of replacement trees that are going to be required, correct?
Well, that number comes from the one of the big problems with the tree ordinance is that it keeps saying new development, new development, new development, and there aren't much specifics about private property.
That's right.
So, in fact, the last time we really had a deep discussion about it, we weren't sure if we had any power at all according to the fact that the new development was everywhere. And then I found these two sections that basically say we can decide as a group. But the the idea of perhaps an approval of the permit with two options for the resident, such as, you know, a cash in lieu amount of blank, and if you're talking about a hundred dollars time or a hundred dollars times 12, 1,200 dollars is, I would say, you know. At at the very least, fine, you know, especially considering what we had the other woman do. Or the replacement of 12 trees, they can decide, or a variance that we decide, so does that help?
I also just want to, do you, did the homeowners understand what we're talking about and? Okay, so.
Oh, I didn't know you were the homeowners.
Yes. So basically, right now, if the tree permit is removed, like, if you are granted the tree removal permit, you have the option or you have the requirement to replace those trees. And for every 65, six inches, you.
Of diameter.
Of diameter, you have to replace a tree, so that would be 12 and a half for your current removal. The option.
12 and a half trees?
Yes, and so the option is to either pay a hundred dollars per tree and not plant 12 trees on your property or plant 12 trees from the tree list on your property.
Even though there's not sufficient space to plant 12 trees?
Which is why the in lieu cash amount.
Just to.
And I just, I just want to clarify.
One correction, this is not a required list.
Hopefully, I'm accurate, Mike, so.
Yeah, no, 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 I just want to be be clear. If the applicant is here tonight, I think the most appropriate thing to do would be to have them come up to the podium and and talk if they choose to. And then if we're going to have an open dialogue with them, I think that they have to come to the podium so that they can be recorded. And I also, I want to, I want to be really clear that the section of the tree ordinance that I just read is the part that I di I think it is deemed applicable to this case. And to make a jump to the development code and start talking about cash in lieu, that's not covered here.
I totally agree, my point in bringing it up is that the that amount helps us, you know, even though it's a fraction of what it ought to be, it helps the commission get an idea, what does it actually cost to replace those trees? Now, according to John, in private property, a planted installed tree is 900 per per tree. That's the only reason I mention it is before I found those sections, which saying we can kind of go with what we decide, but for a little basis to work with, that's the, that's the only reason I bring it up. I'm not saying we have to do that, but it seems to me like in a situation like this, if we're doing a variance, we're talking about 12 trees, it's not the worst number to use. So commissioners, we don't have to use that number, we don't, it's just what happens to be in the ordinance now. That's under the new development, as is much of the tree ordinance under new development. And this tree, this list is not required. It's just a great list.
Hi, my name's Laura Lucas, and I am property owner at 542 Estee Madera Drive in Sonoma. As was stated earlier, the reason that we're even requesting to have the tree removed is because of the fact that it is causing several issues to our home. One is that, and I have the bills, in the last 45 days, we've had to call out boat and plumbing twice to actually, you know, clear out our drain so that we could actually flush our toilets and run water in our home. That's $700 that we've just paid to have that done. In addition to that, you know, the other times during the year that we have this done, because all of a sudden, you know, those spider roots have invaded the sewer and, you know, unbeknownst to us, all of a sudden, we're trying to do something and, you know, there you go. But additionally, the the issue that has the tree has created, and the tree was planted there when we bought the house 22 years ago, is the fact that it is actually raising our foundation. So we have hardwood floors throughout our family room and most of the house, and the hardwood floors are starting to come apart at the seams because of the roots raising the foundation. So if those two major things, if they hadn't have not been occurring and don't continue to occur, we would never even consider having the tree removed. But we, it it it's the tree or us kind of thing, because, you know, if we have to go through the process of fixing our foundation, that is going to be a huge cost. And if the tree is still there, that problem will continue. So, like I said, those are our two main reasons for coming forward to actually ask to have the tree removed. We are fine with, you know, planting another tree on that front property, you know, in so to speak, replacement of that tree. We would not ever put in a redwood tree. Additionally, you know, we would want something that was an evergreen that, you know, would provide, you know, some barrier between, you know, the street and our home. But, and we were just speaking with, actually, Arbus was just at the house, JP Anderson, because he comes through and trims our fruit trees in our backyard. And on an annual basis, he comes and does that, and we asked his opinion about what could we place in that front yard? And he was just mentioning a couple of things, one might be like a little gem magnolia, one was a cam camphor? I may have that wrong. And then he had, you know, we could even put in something else, what was that, Mark? Yeah, but anyway, yeah, and we're open to whatever, you know, would be in your agreement. So any questions at this point in time? I just wanted to make sure you're aware, we're not just doing this very frivolously, because as John was saying, it's not a cheap endeavor endeavor, and we wouldn't do it unless, you know, we really had to.
It does sound very clear that it's pretty urgent at your property that this tree be removed. There's, I don't think there's a question about that, and I don't I don't sense that anyone's against the removal of the tree. What we're talking about tonight is what the city code says about what what because the city is trying to not have a reduction in trees and tree canopy. So what we've been discussing is how can we make this work where we don't go too far off what the city code says, but also create a variance so it's not unfair to you?
Right.
So that's.
And here's my question, I don't mean to be, but if today, when we put we put in our requests, the the code was one thing, you know, would the variance really apply to us retroactively? I guess would be my question, if that's something that you're going to approve today or in a future date.
A very, a a change in the ordinance would not happen today, absolutely not. We're going to have some discussions about it, but it's a pretty big process. So if it, whatever happens today is about the code today. The actually, the item right after this item, we're talking about are a list that I think you might want to hear about this list, so if you might just stick around.
Yeah, sure.
But yeah, so we're just talking about, you know, if we stuck with the only basis of which we have reference to what this cash in lieu amount means, if you're not going to replace the tree, what is the fair amount of cash in lieu that you should do? What we're talking about is making it more fair to you than the the code says. We we basically can come up with a number that we think is fair, so we're on your side.
Okay, I just, when it was talked about 12 trees in lieu of the tree that's there right now, that's a little overwhelming because we don't have the space for it. Neither in the front yard nor in the backyard, so.
That that's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was very clear.
Okay, and just one last thing is, you know, if we had to pay a fee, it it is in addition to certainly the amounts that we have already paid out and will be required to pay to actually have this tree removed. So it does become a little overwhelming, but from a cost perspective.
May I speak, John? Or may I speak?
Yes.
So I'd like Mike to repeat what the code says relative to this situation. And it was to plant a replacement tree and, right?
Mike?
It may include planting, the planting of replacement trees.
Okay, but there's no in lieu, and there's no money involved. I I find it really punitive if someone has to take out a big tree. And I I know how much that costs, John just stated it, and that it, so I'm I'm wondering, is the city trying to get cash to, I understand having an urban forest and having trees in the city, but there's management issues to me. And there's also, you know, you're putting the burden on someone who has a problem to start with. And I'm I'm somewhat confused by the, if that was the the goal.
I can answer that.
Okay.
So the cash in lieu fee is specific to new development. New development would be something similar to what we have going on at the corner of Fifth Street and MacArthur, that is Hummingbird. So new development would be a developer that comes in, chooses a lot or several lots, and decides to put new homes on there. And so, for example, the process that De Nove Homes is going through with Montaldo, that will require trees to be removed, right? At some, because you can't put a bunch of houses on there with all the trees. In that case, if you don't want to plant the replacement trees or, you know, the space doesn't require it, the developer can pay a cash in lieu fee for the trees. That standard does not apply to homeowners that are taking trees out. As Commissioner Mizuraka has pointed out, you know, that can be a little confusing, especially because so much of the tree ordinance applies to new development. What we're talking about right here actually only applies to section, I believe it's a 12 oh eight point oh five oh C, which is a tree removal permit, because that's what we're discussing, right? And the tree removal permit is pretty specific in that the Parks Recreation Open Space Committee will review the tree removal permit and possibly require replacement trees, but it does not require cash in lieu fees. That is only for a developer. That is only for a developer that is developing a parcel of land.
All right, can, let me get really clear then about this, just so. I understand the part about, um, replacement trees relative to diameter, et cetera. Uh, I think what Jess was basically trying to do was, was if, if they don't have room for twelve trees, then what happens? So then you just cost out twelve trees and that's, that's, that's the price that they pay for this, to the city, right? Is that, that's kind of one of the things that I hear here.
That's what's currently being discussed. However, that's not the process.
It's not a code.
Correct. And it, it would not work in this particular situation because it's a development standard that's being applied to homeowners. Now, if you wanted to tell the homeowners, um, that because you're pulling the redwood tree and you want them to plant twelve replacement trees, you could ask them to do that. However, you would not, um, offer the cash in lieu option because that's
Could they plant those twelve trees or we, as the city plant those somewhere else if they paid for those twelve trees?
I need to comment on what you just mentioned because the code says, subject to conditions as the committee deems appropriate, which may include the planting of replacement trees. It does not say, it's what we deem appropriate, may included in cash in lieu fee. The, there, and then the additional code, the enforcement code talks about, we can also require security to ensure the trees establishment and proper care. So in fact, we can do a cash in lieu. That's how I read it. The fact is that the, the language for private property trees is, is pretty vague and pretty wide open in the ordinance. It's one of the things I've been trying to work on, but it's not going to happen right now. So I think we can do a variance with cash in lieu. And as I say, the only thing we have reference to in the existing code is that hundred dollars per tree. So.
Okay, so then my question would follow is, when that money's collected, where does it go and how is it used?
It normally would go into a fund that is used, mentioned in the code, um, that's used to plant trees and or education. So I don't know why the education thing is there necessarily, but, um, so, um, I don't know. To me, as I'm thinking about this, I think the hundred dollar mark might not be inappropriate in this case. Hundred dollar per tree with twelve trees, so I don't know. What do I?
I agree that, um, the twelve trees is not an appropriate use of their land, like that does not work at all. But I don't think just throwing a random number like a hundred dollars that we've used in the past is appropriate either. We need to set the standard of what are we doing, what is the cap? And, but we have not decided that tonight. So I think if we're all on the same page of using the hundred dollars as we have for the past year, if not more, um, I think we move forward and let them not have another urgent situation and stall this out for another meeting. I would like to give them the removal permit today.
With the twelve hundred?
Yeah.
My observation is that, um, I think the homeowners deserve fairness. And it's, it's another case of a great tree being in the wrong spot. And we addressed a similar situation at our July meeting where, and there's no room to plant additional trees. So those folks agreed that they would plant trees maybe where the city deemed most appropriate along the bike path or wherever. And at that time, we came to the hundred dollar per tree. Uh, I mean, they had, I think, a half a dozen redwoods and it would have been exorbitant in addition to the cost that they will face removing the tree and so, so forth. Yeah. Um, so I don't think the homeowner should be penalized for having a great tree that just happens to be in the wrong place.
Can we have a motion? Those for, it looks like we're approving the removal, but we haven't agreed on what the replacement price should be. I thought you had one there, Jess, that you were suggesting.
The other, the other thing is, um, just, this is my last thing I'm going to mention about this. This isn't the only situation in which a, a private property owner is responsible for a tree sitting in the curb in front of their house. I mean, it's just kind of part and parcel being a homeowner in a city. All city ordinances talk about having to, you know, ha, bear some of the burden of the trees on your property, whether they be, you know, it's usually front yard, street side, that kind of thing. It's, it's, that's part of it. And, you know, we can't discount the, the issue of trying to keep our tree canopy from going down even further in this situation. But if you want a motion from me, I will make a motion. Let me look at the, I want to say this right. I move to approve the tree removal application at five four two Estamadera Drive and recommend a cash in lieu amount in the absence of replacing the tree, an amount of twelve hundred dollars.
Can we do kind of a mix where it's a certain number of trees and a certain amount of money? Or did that just include it? Because it sounded like, can, can we see how many?
Or could we deduct the amount if they put in a magnolia? And it's five thousand dollars.
For how many trees they want to put in, deduct from that amount?
Yeah.
Because if they want to put in one, two.
Okay, but what are we going to, what are we going to say the amount is per tree? That's the question. We could do, except it doesn't really ameliate, it, it doesn't really work.
No, because if they bought a five thousand dollar tree, that negates the entire twelve hundred.
Well, not to mention, that's just one tree. So it doesn't really work.
So are we putting the burden of, uh, an urban forest on the homeowner? I mean, I really feel that my city should, um, if we want to plant trees, we, you know, they didn't intentionally grow that tree that big to, and then decide we want to get rid of it and we want, you know, less canopy. They, they're doing it because it's ruining their house. And I just, I have a really hard time with this either in the in lieu if it's going into a city fund to fund trees because they have a bad problem on their house. People aren't usually taking down trees willy nilly, you know, just to, to get rid of the urban canopy. They've got a problem. And I, I find those two issues very separate and, um, when we were on the, um, the, the, the ad hoc committee looking for how we would divide the money and the different pots and the development money, what is that, Mike, the, um, that you, for parks and trees? And I, I can't remember the fund.
Quibby?
The fu, quibby.
Quibby money.
Quibby, yeah. So you're filling that, um, uh, and, and these people, that's because people are cutting down trees, they're having the benefit of development in Sonoma. And, you know, they're, they're maybe not making a park in their subdivision. So they're giving money to the city for those amenities for the community. I just, I just have a really hard time with, with punishing people just because they got a big tree in their yard and they, and they need to take it out.
I, I feel like the right thing to do in this situation is to waive the in lieu cash payment until we have decided as a board that, or a commission that, what is our plan moving forward? Because they're caught in the middle of this right now and I don't think that's just either. And I don't think that we should just throw a random number out that's going who knows where. That's my two cents. I don't know, Sav, do you have anything?
Could I, could I just say that historically, the tree committee and maybe early pros traded a tree being removed for a twenty-four inch box? And you let the, you let the homeowner decide what box, regardless of what the cost was. That's, that was what, that was often our ask for replacing. So it's getting complicated.
Like what their plan would be, yeah.
It does.
I'd like to so move that, that the, um, tree removal request be granted and that we honor the past practice that replaced with a twenty-four inch box tree, which would be off, off the current new tree list that is available for the city. And then if that passes going forward and we get to revising the tree ordinance, we're going to revisit this question over and over. And so I think we should defer to not try and do that on this particular case. So I'd like a second to.
I second.
And can I just say that?
Yeah.
They're not required to use that list. Unless you say so, I guess, but it's intended to be recommended tree species.
So are we clear on that one? So they can do a twenty-four inch box tree from any list? Okay. And that was seconded. Any further discussion? Call for motion, call for vote?
Commissioner Cullenin. Commissioner Izetta.
Aye.
Youth member Melanger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mizuraka.
No.
Uh, Commissioner Rouse, Rauch, sorry.
Aye, but it pains me.
Vice Chair Tolbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender.
Aye.
Chair, uh, Chair Donnelly.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes seven one. Thank you.
And that will be something we'll pick up going forward for sure. And another big issue, of course, is what's the economic value of a tree compared to the private homeowner? And of course, there's the value to the carbon sequestration to the city, the heat island effect, a whole number of. So we need to weigh those when we start to look at the changes in the ordinance. But thank you for your, your patience. Yeah, sorry about that tree too, but I know you are too. Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item, um, which is four point two, the tree list ad hoc report out. Ashley Cotter will now tell us about the proposed new adoption, new tree to be, list to be adopted.
Thank you, Chair Donnelly. Yeah, thank you. So the pros ad hoc committee for the tree list met on Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. The committee member, member in attendance was Commissioner Mizuraka. City staff in attendance included Mike Berger, Director of Public Works, Kathy Martindale, um, Administrative Assistant, and John Mizerf, our contract city arborist. Commissioner Mizuraka provided two tree inventory lists. These lists were intended to address trees for replacement in residential setting, settings. Commissioner Mizuraka and staff discussed and reviewed both tree lists and, and approved the master tree list that you all have in front of you and that Kathy has here. So the, um, recommended action today is to adopt the new recommended tree list that Commissioner Mizuraka and John Mizerf have both worked, uh, put in a lot of time and effort on.
I have a quick question. Is it, is it the climate one then too? Is this related to?
It is.
Okay.
A few of the trees that were on the existing list also showed up on the, the UC Master Gardener list. Just as a, a reminder, um, this list is trees recommended to have the best chance to thrive for the next fifty to one hundred years. We did, we did hone it down quite a bit. The, um, it came to, I think it's thirty-two trees. And these trees are the ones that have the best damage resistance, temperature tolerance, drought tolerance, pest resistance, native trees, nuisance factor, maintenance required and habitat friendly.
Damage resistance? Is that redwood root damage resistance?
Damage resilience. How much will the species be in rebounding from physical damage?
Question is, tonight for us to say that this is, um, the list as a recommendation or that people would have to use?
It's not required.
Okay.
But it would replace the list, the master tree list, which they don't say is required and or recommended. It's just the master tree list and hopefully would also be used by the city.
I, I agree with what Commissioner Ross just brought up. I, I wonder why there isn't at least a, a preamble or a introductory statement that this list has been revised because it was taking, uh, climate sustainability issues. So there's a sense of, I mean, if I look at this new list, I don't have any sense that you're really concerned, being concerned about the impacts of climate change. It's not explicit on this list, like what's under the master gardener's list. It seems that it's, it's an educational statement to the city. Here's why this list and maybe why aren't these tree, other trees on it? It would be nice to have a general statement that this has been done because of the acceleration of global change.
Mm-hmm, that sounds like a great idea. Um, that, maybe that could be implemented when the list, if, if it passes, gets put onto the website. In addition, um, when we can, John and I are going to put together a, um, planting and maintenance guide with lots of additional information, um, that we can add more information there, but I love that idea.
Yeah.
You could certainly adopt the tree list tonight and then make that recommended and we could make that adjustment after. So adopt the, uh, the tree list with the correction.
That's what I'm suggesting that, 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 I think we're definitely going to prove, prove it today, but I think that it could be enhanced with that kind of statement. And certainly going forward, that we're going to talk about shortly, the city's just announced an RFP for a tree inventory of the city and a, a canopy study. And out of that will come, um, a chance to look at overall tree ordinance and also to look at, um, an issue like this of, of the importance of climate change and going forward with the forest management plan for the city. Any comments or questions?
I have some comments. Um, so, um, this is a great list, but I do believe that it needs a further explanation of the, some of the trees. One of my favorite trees here in Sonoma is a buckeye tree. It is the last to leaf out and the first to lose its leaves. And it's a very, um, uh, it looks dead most of the year. And I think it's an incredibly beautiful tree, but I think it would be a bad choice for most homeowners that thought that they were getting a tree, that a deciduous, normal deciduous tree. And I think there are other, other issues around some of the trees. Some of them are extremely messy and, um, that I think is important. Not just that, um, not just there's heavy fruit drop, there's a difference between heavy fruit drop and mess. And, um, so I think, I think there are some, there should be some further columns put in to help people, guide them to what is the best tree. A wonderful tree on this list was Cerusus occidentale. And, um, uh, it grows with no water in rocky places. And I don't think the most of Sonoma is that, is that way. So, um, it's just, you know, I think there, there is further explanation so you don't have somebody going out and buying something that, um, isn't going to thrive for them.
You're right, there are those things. There's a lot of trees out there to choose from. So we did our best to winnow this down. And we, I could find a criticism probably of each of these trees in some way. Some are not suitable for street trees and that's been, that's been noted. We're, you know, the fruiting trees in particular, we don't want on the street. Those are more recommended to be front yard or side yard or backyard trees. So there, there is some nuance there. And I mean, we could put a list together that's twenty pages long of, of, of good trees. This one is just winnowed down to be a usable size. And yeah, and I understand your comments. Those are, they're, they're accurate. But I still think that the trees on here could be very valuable trees in a variety of situations in, in Sonoma.
I wasn't questioning that. I was just questioning that, you know, the, one of the big complaints that, uh, a lot of people around town have is, is even the, um, uh, liquid ambers, their seed pods. And, um, I think that people should understand that, you know, walking through our beautus, our nidos understory would allow you to stick to the pavement instead of, you know, your shoes would be a mess. So it's just, I just was asking if there could be a little bit more. So it's just, I just was asking if there could be a little bit more information, you know, there.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Jess has been the one who's done, you know, majority of the, of the work putting this together. Probably should go, that question should go to you, but yeah, certainly more information's better.
What I have to say about that is keep in mind that people can do their own research as well. And when they go to buy a tree, they can do, you know, this is, this is a list that has been drilled down, these high-scoring trees on the UC Master Gardener program, what they drilled down for our area. So yeah, I think we could, we could continue to expand this ad nauseam. Personally, I'd like to see it passed and then people do their own research on the, you know, it's been months of work to get to this point. We've been talking about it last few meetings. I know you weren't, weren't able to attend. So I'd like to see it passed and, you know, if people care to do further research, they can.
I wasn't questioning that. I think that's a good idea.
So I think one thing Jess did really beautifully was condense this, is when we started with it, it was two pages wide and I couldn't, I couldn't handle it. I couldn't read it. I couldn't track it across. So she's done a good job getting it down to this single eight and a half by 11. And the consequence is that we don't have quite as many columns. So there's a lot going on there.
I, I also am pretty certain that anybody who looks at the list as the recommended list would probably, they go to their local garden place and they tell, ask them about some of the trees and then they, if the local gardeners are who they are, and some of them we go to, they're going to tell you, man, this one is great for this, but this is what happens and stuff like that. So that, that hopefully they will get a better direction relative to the different negativities of what can happen with them as much as the positivity. I move that we adopt the new tree list.
I'll second it.
And to clarify, it's a recommendation. It's not a requirement. Okay.
Commissioner Cullenin. Commissioner Isetta.
Aye.
Youth member Mellinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mizuraka.
Aye.
Commissioner Roush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Tolbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender.
Aye.
Chair Donnelly.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
And a special thanks to Jess and John who have really gone more than the extra miles for this one. It's been a lot of work and I really appreciate what you've accomplished. And I, I'm glad it is a recommended list and people will be free to pursue other options and consult with either the city arborist or their favorite landscape professional. Okay, next item on the agenda is 4.3, the Sonoma Overlook Trail and Montini Open Space Preserve Signage Report Out from the Ad Hoc Committee. Ashley?
Thank you, Chair Donnelly. So our SOT and Montini Open Space Ad Hoc Committee met on October 16th, 2024. Committee members in attendance included Commissioner Mizuraka and Commissioner Isetta. City staff included Mike Berger, myself, and Kathy Martindale. We went over several things such as like the overall scope of the project, which we decided on a three-phased approach. So the first phase would be addressing temporary signs for replacement. The second phase would be addressing permanent signs for replacement. And then the third phase would be addressing miscellaneous signs such as no dogs, no smoking, et cetera. Currently, we're working on the first phase of this project, which includes the replacement of existing deteriorated kiosk signs with temporary replacements. So we've identified five locations, which include the Sonoma Overlook Trail entrance at Norbaum Road, Montini entrance at Norbaum Road, Montini entrance at Fourth Street West, Fourth Street West trailhead at the Kissing Gate and the Field of Dreams entrance. The Toyon Trail is still in good condition. We got some rough measurements. So the sign size is generally assumed to be 28 inches by 40 inches, which we are planning to field verify prior to the install. We, the commissioners took a look at the current proposed temporary sign replacement and approved it as a temporary sign. The signs will be printed on corrugated metal, corrugated plastic with varying year stickers to help guests orient where they are. And then the next phase of this project will include an inventory of the signs by size and picture to aid in the permanent signs for replacement. This will be input into a GIS layer that will allow staff to evaluate sign location and identify replacement timeline for each sign. Commissioner Mizuraka has volunteered to assist in inventory gathering and has been working with our operations manager, Chris Peg, to confirm shape files that will work with the city's GIS layer. And so at this point, there's no, no action needed. It's just an update on what the ad hoc is working on.
I just have a question. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'm familiar with the signs in Overlook Trail too, and I appreciate what we've done when we added them to the Montini. But the ones that are up there have taken a huge beating from the sun. And I'm just wondering, even though you're doing temporary to make sure you've got the right maps again, what are your thoughts when you go to step two of putting permanent signs up there that are? Do you have some sense of, of what quality of permanent sign replacement is going to be more effective in resisting that sun damage?
Well, I can't say this is, we'll have more ad hoc meetings. This is kind of the first phase of the first part of kind of a larger project. So we can definitely discuss the material for the intended replacement sign and decide on it before it actually gets installed. So right now, we're just going with the corrugated plastic for the replacement sign. And then as we get closer to permanent replacements, that will definitely be discussed.
Any other?
I have more to add to this, of course. I didn't realize that, I understood from our meeting that you were going to print the temporary signs in-house and laminate. Are you printing them on corrugated plastic? Okay, so that's not accurate. And also those temporary signs.
I don't, just to clarify, I think we're just printing it. We've never done this before on our printer. Our printer's brand new. I don't believe it takes corrugated.
I wouldn't think so. I just was surprised by that.
If it does, we will. And if it doesn't, what we'll do is we'll just print and then we'll put them straight on the laminate after that.
Fine by me. I just wanted to clarify because when I, when I heard her say that, I thought, are y'all printing on plastic?
Well, and here again, we're, we're learning the ins and outs and nuances of the.
Absolutely. Guerrilla tactics. The other thing that commissioners should know is that this has been pushed back, this set of projects, due to the fact that staff has got too much other things going on. So the temporary signs, at the least, at the, at the very soonest, hopefully at the end of February before the SOT rehab project, will be placed. I actually had a meeting with Richard Dale yesterday on some other issues. And he said that they might, if they don't get installed by the end of February, that they might just print some in their office and stick them up so that people have that to use when the upper trail is closed for the rehab project. So we can discuss that. But it's kind of, this is, this is kind of on hold at this point, correct?
The project is going to get done this winter and I hadn't anticipated doing it this fall. So as far as I'm concerned, we're sticking with our schedule.
Okay.
As things slow down in the winter, we'll be taking this project on.
Okay.
So we're ready to move on, that sounds like.
You need to ask for public comment?
Pardon?
You need to ask for public comment?
Oh, it's for public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item 4.4, Plaza Irrigation Ad Hoc Report Out.
Yeah, I'll be discussing this agenda item. The Plaza Irrigation Ad Hoc, at the September 11th, 2024 Parsha Rec Open Space Meeting, the committee established an ad hoc committee to assist staff in drafting a request for proposals for Plaza irrigation. Staff hosted an informal walk-through of the plaza. Attendees included myself, David Gill and city manager, council member Ron Wellender, and two contractors. Staff discussed the Plaza irrigation after the walkthrough and decided that a better course of action will lead to, to pursue a survey of the plaza prior to any irrigation work. City staff is currently working on a request for proposals for the survey work and will pursue the irrigation work at a later date. The recommended action tonight is for the council to disband the ad hoc committee for the Plaza irrigation until after the survey. RFP has been completed. A surveyor has been chosen and the survey work has been completed. And that concludes staff's report.
Any commissioners' comments, questions?
So I see here too that you recommend the disbanding of the ad hoc committee that I was not included in, we were going to include myself and I think Charlie. So that's not going to happen, that is what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah, right. We're not going to pursue the irrigation work at this time and what we're going to do instead is survey the plaza. We're going to develop a topographical map that gives us all the different contours of the plaza. The plaza right now has some drainage issues. And before we get going on irrigation and landscaping and making the grass green, we want to make sure that we have, we have our arms around and a very good, clear understanding what the drainage issues are and any other issues that pop up during the survey topograph and the work that's done. And what's going to involve, it's going to involve inventorying every tree, every contour of grade, all the different appurtenances that we have out there. It's going to give us the ability to take a look at the plaza globally. And before we get started on any single aspect of work, take a look at the big picture and make sure we're not missing something by putting the cart before the horse.
Also, survey of all the existing.
Yes. Yes. And not only that, but valves, controllers, what those different valves, what different systems they're controlling. Yeah, it's a inventory that, you know, we, we really should have it at Public Works.
And we've never had that. There's no existing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my only suggestion would be it seemed like when the commission formed this ad hoc committee, then we were, felt like we were excluded from that initial meeting. So you don't need to be here. I think for an ad hoc committee to be most effective, the more information from the get-go is beneficial rather than coming in midstream, late stream, and then evaluating. That, that's just an observation.
Yeah, and I agree. And it's unfortunate that we, we were, we went down the road of doing an irrigation makeover because it really dawned on me that if we do this, and this is after we had set up the ad hoc, that if we do this, it's, it's going to be counterproductive to the finished product if we get off on the wrong foot. And when I started thinking about what do we really need to fully understand all the different problems at the plaza, that's when I pitched putting a, getting a surveyor on board, putting a RFP out for surveying. And we're on track to get that RFP out shortly. And once we get that survey work done, provided that it's funded, because it's not funded yet. It's just a, it's an idea right now, but I think it's a really good one that's got a lot of support. And that's, you know, I'm looking forward to getting that irrigation ad hoc together. Don't get me wrong. And we will one of these days because that's one of the key things that we want to do. We want to make sure that we're not overwatering certain areas that could be detrimental to the long-term aspects.
And in that regard, could we get a copy of the RFP when it comes out, Mike? Or would it be on the website?
Oh yeah, it'll be on the city website.
Okay. What's, what's the way you access? I tried to find that for the new one on the tree inventory, RFP that's out, but I haven't navigated the city website that well. What's?
I found it before and I'll find the link and I'll, I'll email it out.
I appreciate it.
You got it.
Any other, other comments, questions about this disbanded ad hoc? Thank you for your service. Okay, moving. We are up to.
You have to call for public comment. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Public comment. Thank you, Kathy. Hearing none. And go to 4.5.
You, you also need to disband it if everybody agrees. You don't actually need to do a vote, but you need to have a discussion and have a consensus on it.
Okay. Thank you. Is that sufficient, Kathy? Okay, thank you. 4.5, review and discuss Plaza bench replacement.
Thank you. So currently, the city is in progress on CIP P10, which is Plaza Park Improvements. The, part of this work included the installation of the Big Belly Trash Cans and the new bike racks in the plaza. This is partially funded by Prop 68, which is a grant the city received or currently, it's currently being administered through State Parks and Recreation Department. The overall project cost for this was $231,269. So after the Big Belly Trash Cans went in and the bike rack installations, there's still a remaining amount on this project balance of about $18,000. Staff has discussed replacing the Plaza benches with the grant administrators. They approved this work to be done within the scope of the grant, which means replacing the benches are, is now an eligible expense that we can request reimbursement for. So we've put together a few options for the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission members to provide a recommendation to staff in terms of how to move forward. So with regard to the wood, the current configuration of the benches is two pieces of wood per bench seat. What we'd like to propose is one piece of wood per bench seat. This won't change the size of the bench itself. It's just a different configuration of the wood to provide the same result and overall it'll be lower maintenance. The finish being considered is stain or paint. Staff is recommending paint as opposed to stain or polyurethane due to maintenance concerns. Graffiti, if we, if you were to move forward with stain, graffiti would need to be mechanically or chemically removed. So mechanically would be sanding down all the way. And then you'd have to restain every single time. So if, that would increase the overall maintenance of the benches. And so that's why staff is currently recommending paint. So what we need from you is a recommendation from pros on what configuration. So whether you want to keep the current configuration of two wood, pieces of wood per bench or move forward with the proposed configuration of one piece of wood per bench and the finish, so stain versus paint.
Originally, were two pieces used for ventilation for drying purposes and kind of duration of the wood? I'm curious as to why they never put one to begin with.
I would think that typically, I mean, when, usually when you see those types of systems, it's usually like two by six, four by six. I think that the stock is harder to get. And a lot of people don't really want to mess around with one piece of wood. Yeah, and it's harder to get. It's harder to haul. It's harder to put in place. Takes more people. Whereas like a four by six, four by eight is pretty standard size. You can get it at local. What we're doing with this lumber order is we're getting the entire plaza and, not the entire plaza. We won't be doing the trellis at the amphitheater, but we're looking at all the benches in the plaza and picnic tables. And so we're able to get these larger stock pieces and they aren't, they're readily available from this vendor. But we might not be able to drive down Freemans and get them because they're, they're not available necessarily there.
They may, is it more expensive though for one than two, I would think? One, one big board, I'm pretty sure with the thickness we're talking about is going to be more expensive than two.
We took a look at, we took a look at the cost and the cost that we got was fairly good. I haven't seen the cost estimate. Operations manager did that, but we got a pretty decent price for this lumber. Yeah, lumber's fairly relatively inexpensive right now compared to how it has been. And we got a, we got a decent price for the, for the lumber. Yeah, so.
It's too bad we couldn't use a redwood.
It, it also sounds like the man hours is slightly reduced with one piece.
Definitely for maintenance. Definitely for maintenance because painting that inside is always troubling. Yeah.
Do you paint the underside?
We, we're going to prior to installation for this.
So just out of curiosity, you're going for what, a two by four to like a two by eight or?
No, it's more like four by sixes, four by eight-ish. No, it's more like four by sixes, four by eight-ish are the ones that I've been looking at at the amphitheater. I think they're, you know, a four by six is not four by six, it's a little less than four by, a little less than six. And if I'm not mistaken, those two, the two pieces of wood that currently make up the seat on the benches in the amphitheater are about four by six.
So what size is the one, the one-piece version?
It's gonna be relatively the same size overall. So whatever the gap is in between, it's about an inch. Yeah. Was there another question?
I'm assuming it's the same thickness too.
Approximately.
What's the material?
Redwood.
It's brown paint.
We'll go with the same color.
And that this is the amphitheater benches and the benches throughout the plaza?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, this is the amphitheater benches, the benches throughout the plaza, and all the picnic tables.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we're gonna get as many of the wood features in the plaza, I mean, if there's a brand-new one somewhere, obviously we're not gonna replace that one, but there's, a lot of these are showing some wear and tear, and we're gonna get as many as we can. If some of them don't need it at this time, obviously we wouldn't do it.
And there won't be any duration where there'll be nothing there, kinda thing? Meaning you remove it and there's nothing there? You know what I mean? There's just, there's just two stumps.
No extended duration.
Thank you.
So the eighteen thousand covers it? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I think we're a little short.
I'm just curious if you, I've had quite a long conversation with Ron Wellender, who has a lot of opinions about design review for these benches. He would prefer a good quality redwood with clear stain so that it show, that the plaza is the master treasure of the city and should be treated that way, but bottom line, it says, go with what we have. I'm just curious though, when, I just was out at Hoodeman Slough, and I've been around county parks, is putting in Trex benches now. Did you consider something other than wood as? Sorry, keeps going off. What other cities have done to, besides wood, as a more sustainable over time?
Yeah, what we're taking, what we're bringing to the commission tonight is something that we're replacing in kind, and if the commission wanted us to not do that and extend this to the next committee, then what we could do is we could look into other suggestions. But no, what we're bringing tonight is to replace with redwood.
Okay. But you didn't look at those other options? Is that?
No, we, we looked at replacing in kind.
So my discussion with Mike, or with Ron Wellender was that there'd be a plaza master plan coming up in the next two or three years, and maybe five years before we actually do an overall redo of the plaza, and at that point, the benches might be reconsidered. So this would be a holding operation, basically replacing with what we have with paint. Is that correct?
I'm not clear on the question, but replacing what we have with paint?
Well, I mean.
We're, we're replacing all the wood.
Yeah.
And then painting the wood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that in four to five years, if it decides a big plaza master plan comes out, let's, let's have a completely different aesthetic design in the benches that, that wouldn't be such a major cost loss if we did something drastically different now, is what I'm trying to get at. This is, this is redoing what we've got there basically with wood and paint, and that's, that's probably the lowest, lowest cost option for, for the time.
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't, we examined only replacing in kind. Yeah, replacing deteriorated redwood benches with redwood benches that were new and painting them.
Thank you. My other question is, you've had the needs assessment for the other seventeen city parks, and I noticed one of the, the category didn't include benches, but included picnic areas. So where are we with the status of the deferred maintenance on benches and tables and the other, outside the plaza basically?
Well, right now, we're focused on the plaza.
Yeah.
And we're also working at Olson Park, and I know that we just finished doing rehab of two parks that I inspected in the last month that included painting of the benches.
Which two parks are those, Mike?
I can get those to you. I believe it's Hernestein, and the other one was, but I can get those to you, Commissioner Donnelly.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but here again, your question was about when we're planning to replace all the benches in all the parks?
No, just which ones have you identified that are, and such, had deteriorated so badly that they're, they're in a priority for replacement as a maintenance item?
Well.
New wood and new paint.
Yeah, and so getting back to the assessment, the assessment did not identify this, and we haven't gone out and done an additional assessment since that of park benches. But what we have done is the park screw, the maintenance crew has been, they've, I believe they've finished three parks now in like the last two and a half months where they have gone in and repainted and replaced wood. And I can get you the names of those parks if that's what you're after.
I just, I just wanna know what, what, what the planning is to address deferred maintenance in the existing parks outside the plaza.
Well, yeah, and we've done that. We've done three parks in the last two and a half months. So we're doing a program right now of going through and doing them.
If you could let me know, or let us know what the three are, it'd be interesting.
Will do.
For us to see that.
For sure.
Thank you.
You got it.
Yeah.
Question, you've surveyed the parks in the last two and a half months? The additional ones, the three?
Surveyed.
Like you went out and?
Yeah.
Then you just did a survey, you assessed, sorry, wrong word.
Yeah, we went out.
You assessed, but you didn't.
What?
We didn't repair yet.
Beg your pardon?
You didn't repair, you just assessed.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, we repaired.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those three parks are done, and I'm pretty sure that the park benches were, the wood on them was replaced as we went, and that, or it got painted. Yeah, that was part of the, part of the job description of what we were doing on this latest round of going through and doing maintenance. It was a little bit heavier maintenance than what we've done on typical routine maintenance. Yeah, and like I said, I believe, I know at least two of the parks have been done, and then Olson Park, as you guys know, is a CIP, and those are all gonna get redone during that CIP project. So, yeah, there is work getting done on those, and I'll pass the name of the parks along.
I'd also just like to clarify that with regard to this particular project, the plaza enhancement is actually part of the scope of the grant with which we applied for, so that's why we're not addressing the other park benches, 'cause it's just not within that scope. So that's why it's not mentioned with regard to this particular project.
No, I understand, just outside that Big Belly remaining funding, where else on the other city budget capital or measure M or whatever that we can see where we're using it to keep the other parks up to standard there? Thank you, though. Any other questions or comments on this one?
I think he wanted us to give an approval for either a two-slat or one-slat bench.
You wanna make a recommendation, Jeff?
I, I recommend that we accept the recommendation from one, one piece.
And paint versus stain.
Yeah. In, in like, in light color, like you have now.
I second.
Commissioner Cullinan. Commissioner Isena.
Aye.
Youth member Mallinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mizuraka.
Aye.
Commissioner Roush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Tolbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender.
Yes.
Chair Donnelly.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Addendum item four point six, discuss requesting city council to indi, to initiate a municipal code amendment to chapter twelve point oh eight tree ordinance to make the tree removal process administrative.
Thank you, Commissioner Donnelly. So currently, the tree ordinance, as we've discussed, is codified in chapter twelve point oh eight of our municipal code. So in order to make changes to this code, the pros commission, committee can request to city council to initiate an ordinance amendment. This is a separate item from upload, updating the tree list, so, which we've already addressed. So some of the updates that have been suggested so far have been updated, the cash-in-lue replacement amount, violation amounts for penalties, and making the tree removal process administrative. Making the tree removal process administrative would essentially mean that staff would take in the tree removal permits and decide on approving or not approving and subsequent, I believe, replacement trees, and then provide an update to the pros quarterly about tree removal replacements. So if city council initiates an update to the ordinance, then staff will then work with the joint tree committee on amending the ordinance, and then the proposed amendments would be presented to city council for adoption. A comprehensive update of the ordinance will occur after completion of the urban forestry management plan. So essentially, what we're looking for, from you today is to request city council to initiate an amendment to chapter twelve point oh eight, the city tree ordinance, and that will get the process going.
So I was the one who instigated this, as you might imagine. The tree ordinance is going to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb, but it's going to take a long time. There's a schedule by which this is done, and if we wait for the canopy study and all that to happen, it could be quite a while, in my opinion. I mean, the joint tree commission met last year, I think it was April, and hasn't met since. There's been no correspondence since, and when I read through the whole tree ordinance, I mentioned to Jennifer Gates that I think that instead of waiting on this, that we need to, that the city needs to look at these cash-in-lue amounts, the criminal penalties, which are very low, in my opinion, and not commensurate with surrounding municipalities, and the fact that the guide they use for plant appraisal is from nineteen ninety-two. So what Jennifer said to me is, at the pros meeting, I suggest you all, as a commission, agree to request an ordinance amendment, then you can, as a commission, make a suggestion on the topics to be updated. The specifics will come later if they initiate it. I, I also wanna mention, if I haven't already, that staff has indicated they don't have time to deal with the whole tree ordinance anyway, so I just picked what I felt were the most urgent, and, you know, it just kinda pains me to go commission meeting by commission meeting and making recommendations on tree removals with this old information. And again, it's part, it's part of home ownership to have to replace the trees. It's part of the deal. When you have a home here, it's part of the ordinance, it's part of the law. So that's what I'd say about that. So discussion or comment?
I'd like to comment also, I think it's, the first part of the amendment of what we talked about earlier in the meeting is to go over the tree replacement ordinance and, and the replacement value. But equally important is to move from this reactive voice taking, looking at removing trees to how are we gonna promote and increase the tree canopy in the city? And the city has just issued an RFP for a tree inventory canopy study to be conducted, and I'm very encouraged by that. What happened to the joint tree committee just was that we folded into a CAL FIRE Urban Forest Management Plan grant, and we worked on that, and unfortunately, it was unsuccessful in getting funded. So that's when I, like you, I reached out to Jennifer Gates and said, okay, where, where are we with the tree committee and then changing the ordinance that would affect the tree inventory, tree canopy, and be more proactive about that? So that's what she's outlining. I don't see why we can't pass this motion to have the council initiate that we're going to amend the tree ordinance and, and proceed with the first part of this while the RFP and the tree canopy study is conducted, because eventually, that's going to shape and be an overall writing concept for the, the process. But I don't, I don't see it, why it would prevent us, and the limited staff capacity to deal just with amending the ordinance on the tree, tree list and replacement ratios.
I would be willing to do some more footwork on this, by the way. I have started looking at surrounding municipalities. Cedric Nathan, you had sent me, she had a database sort of looking at what they do in Southern California. As I mentioned, a lot of those municipalities charge a huge amount for a permit, which I'm not recommending, but, but I think we need to get real with, if we don't want the, and we don't wanna keep setting precedences with these votes for no fee, no cash in lieu. I mean, we're, we're starting to set a precedent, even though we are talking about redwood trees in both cases. I don't wanna get started with that where homeowner can say, well, they didn't have to pay anything, they didn't have to replace, that kind of thing. So as you can tell, I'm passionate about keeping the canopy as big or larger than it already is in the amount of trees.
Do you have a suggestion for the updated cash in lieu, or are you, are we still finalizing that?
Well, I mean, in my discussion with John, it was nine hundred on private property installed per tree, per tree. And as I, I also mentioned, when I started my survey of surrounding municipalities, it's a little low. So this is not, you know, everybody has a tree ordinance, everybody requires replacement, everybody charges a lot of money. A lot of times, the, these numbers, including the violation numbers, which I could read you the violation numbers, criminal, criminal penalties, uh, let's see, a fine not exceeding two hundred dollars for the first violation, not exceeding three fifty for the second violation within one year, and not exceeding five hundred for each additional violation occurring in one year. So they could just blow off the whole thing, and it also doesn't mention that it's, this ought to be in addition to the replacement costs, so.
What is violation in reference to? Cutting a tree down without receiving a permit?
Yeah, with, just avoiding the whole process. By the way, the ordinance also talks about what is a significant tree, so any tree that's less than six inches in diameter, to me, the way I read it, they kind of overlook it. So if you have a skinny little tree and you take it down, it's not a big deal.
Who?
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for Mike. Do you get a lot of people telling you that there were violations of the tree ordinance? Where would that, that would be, is there a code enforcement guy, or?
That will probably go to code enforcement. It could come into Public Works, and if I'm not mistaken, we don't receive a lot of them. We probably receive a few.
Mm-hmm.
According to the ordinance, Public Works is in charge of enforcement, along with the help of the city attorney. There's nothing in there about checking, you know?
So just to clarify, when you talk about enforcement, are you talking about going out onto people's property, on their private property, and assessing whether there's been a violation?
It doesn't mention that. It just mentions, I can find the part if you want in the, in the code.
Okay, because we enforce, like, you know, we, I haven't had to enforce too many things since I've been here in terms of fines for violations, but code enforcement are the ones that go out and work on private property and deal with these types of situations typically.
One of the great things I, that John and I talked about that we, we found was that some municipalities ask for a bond. So when you get your permit, you have to pay a bond for the replacement tree, and that bond is also retained by the city until the tree lives a certain number of years. John was talking about three years, I've seen seven years, but that might be a good way to keep whomever from having to chase after, did they replant the tree, dah 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 dah. So a refundable bond.
I have a question. Who determines the six-inch replacement per diameter? Like, for me to say, okay, I'm okay with the updated cash in lieu payment, I would find it very hard for us not to have exceptions continuously if we're saying, then they have to replace twelve and a half. Like, there needs to be a cap, or there needs to be, the division needs to be less. Like, we just can't be going and saying, oh, you could have to go replace twelve and a half trees. Like, that's very high to me, given how many redwoods we have in town, and most of the requests we get are for redwoods. Does that make sense?
Not to mention that it's redwoods that are actually causing damage to people's homes, which is a massive cost that they're going to incur, not only to fix the home that they own, which I understand is part of owning a home. However, if they're gonna incur costs to fix the issue, and then also have to cut the tree down, and then also pay us a permit fee, and then also pay to replace and/or do something in lieu, again, we're talking about putting burden on homeowners, which I understand is part of home ownership. However, we have to have some level of grace and/or variance for, for people who are incurring, you know? you know, a lot of damage.
I could, I could do some research on that, too. What do other municipalities do about that? I mean, the six-inch minimum diameter and the six-inch standard is, is a standard in everything I've seen so far, but I'd be happy to take a look if this is what we want to do and see what, what other towns do.
Well, and I think that because there's a lot of discussion tonight, and a lot of really good discussion, I believe what staff's current plan is, and this has been relayed out and discussed at the different tree, tree meetings that Jennifer Gates has been conducting, she has a plan for how to do this. And I think the first thing to do would be to have a meeting with her and request a modification of that plan, because this is going to involve staff time, it's going to involve a lot of different people that have very good input, like I'm hearing up here on the commission. And so I think to get started on something like this, and this is not what's before us tonight, the motion before us tonight is to request city council to initiate an amendment to chapter 12.08 of the tree ordinance. And if we want to agendize something different, we could do that at a future meeting. However, this, this isn't a small task, and it's going to require a significant commitment of time and a lot of different input. And I think that this has been started outright by getting the planning commission, the climate committee, and PROS to joint meetings and to hear different perspectives from different people. And so I think that this is a much bigger task than what we're, how, how it's being portrayed right now, and that we could just get a person working on it, go out, take a few different surveys of different local, localities around and municipalities, and you probably, I don't know if the requests would be come back and present that data at a later meeting. But basically, I think that we want to just be a little bit careful about rushing into rewriting the Muni Code for Trees.
The other thing that has not been discussed is what if there is a financial hardship where someone cannot afford this, and they're only doing the tree removal because of damage to their home?
And this is a very good point. One of many different points that be, that could come up during a proper discussion and proper vetting of chapter 12 of the Muni Code.
But I have a question, too. As you remember, Kathleen Hill requested a tree removal. So it's a huge tree, and she had asked for it to be removed three times, and so it kept growing, right? So is, is, are we asking her, or, you know, future her, to pay an in lieu fee because the city planted a tree that didn't work in the situation, and then she's going to spend 20,000 bucks to remove the tree, fix the sidewalk, fix the road, and, you know?
Is this on Fourth Street?
Yeah. So I think that, you know, that this is, you know, it's going to take a lot of decisions about what exactly, what the situation is for the individual tree, because I would feel terrible asking someone to remove a tree the city planted in front of my house or their house, you know? So I don't, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuances here that I'm not ready to go forward with this request.
Well, just to clarify, isn't the, the recommendation here just to have the council approve that we proceed with an amendment to it, but it doesn't say we have to have a specific?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's sufficient, in my judgment. We want to get, get something started, but it's going to be a work in progress, and I think Mike's suggestion that we go back and check with Jennifer Gates would be a good starting point, so we can see.
She did respond to me. I did ask her, and she did respond, which is what I just read to you. It's sort of this cart before the horse thing. She said, I suggest you all, as a commission, agree to request an ordinance amendment. On the other hand, I mean, maybe what, maybe we want to push this down the road to the next meeting, during which time I'll get more information. It sounds like we sort of have to put a little package together. I think that's what she meant. I mean, she was asking, she says, I sug, at the PROS meeting, I suggest you, as a commission, agree to request an ordinance amendment. Then you can, as a commission, make a suggestion on the topics to be updated. So it sounded like she's saying, ask for the ordinance amendment first, then work on the recommendation. That's how I take it.
I think that's it. So moved.
Well, I've got a couple of observations of having been on the ad hoc tree committee. It's, it's cumbersome for the homeowner requesting the tree removal. For instance, if somebody requests in April for a tree removal, it wouldn't come to the PROS commission until our June meeting. We'd form an ad hoc, they'd report back in the September meeting, and then the commission would vote yea or nay. So six, nine months go by before the homeowner gets an answer. I think we can streamline that by letting it be staff and the, and John. And, and then the other aspect that I think is important is that we have consistency. What, what I see with, we had a redwood situation with our July meeting, and they would have had to replace 30, 40 trees, something like that, based on the number and diameter of their trees. And we just said, how about a dozen? And everybody said, ah, okay, a dozen sounds good. And then today, somebody's taking out one tree, oh, how about a dozen? Because it fits the number. So I think those two aspects, we've, we've got to streamline the whole process, and then we've got to be consistent with how the rules go.
Well, that's my understanding that the amending is one of the first steps would be to change administratively the way tree removal applications are being processed. And I've been advocating ever since I got on this commission from our former work on the tree committee and the Community Service and Environmental Commission. That would allow the city arborist and a staff person to evaluate the request for removal, and then it would be on the consent calendar, and if the homeowner wants to appeal it, then it would appeal first to the PROS commission, as they have in this current, and if the PROS commission still rejects it, they could appeal to the city council. But I, I agree, I think we should go ahead and get this amendment, have the council pass this amendment, and that would be one of the first things that we could do while we work out the rest of the details of the new ordinance issues, which is replacement and also going forward the tree inventory and, and tree canopy study.
And clarity on who, the roles and responsibilities of violation, checking on the trees, all of those.
I found the section on, if anyone cares. The primary responsibility for the enforcement of the ordinance codified in this chapter shall reside with the public works director of the city with the assistance of the city attorney, if that answers your question.
I think we're ready for a motion.
So the motion would be, as she said, to request an ordinance amendment.
The motion would be to request city council to initiate an amendment to the chapter 12.08, 12.08 tree ordinance.
Jeff, you made the first, the motion?
Yes.
And then Charlie, second. Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Probably a comment? No.
There is no. Commissioner Cullenin? Commissioner Iseta?
Aye.
Youth member Mellinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizuraka?
Aye.
Commissioner Roush?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tolbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellander?
Aye.
Chair Donnelly?
Aye.
Thank you. The most, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So are we saying, having done that, is it, do you all want me to keep researching? Okay, and then circle back, see what I find, and I think we're always going to have a need for a variance in certain situations, you know, like, but we have to get the standard down first of the sort of, you know, pure municipal code, and then, then we could also decide what, what we want to do in variance situations. It's not always redwoods, it's lots of other trees. I'll do my best.
How does this get on the city council agenda? Does it get on sort of automatically?
I think, I'll touch base with Jennifer Gates. Now that we've completed this part of the recommendation, I'll work with her to get this to city council, to get them to initiate an amendment. I think it would probably be a consent calendar item at first, I'd imagine, but that's something I'll work with her on.
Good.
She did mention that they're doing a fee study. They have a fee study underway, and so she appreciates our input to that part of it that helps them figure out what they need to do. So someone doing this survey of surrounding areas. So the, but also the issue of whether or not Public Works is going to take over all tree removal requests entirely and remove it from PROS? Is that, wasn't that suggested? Are we still in the same item?
Yeah, it's just making, making it administrative, so it doesn't, I don't believe it said with, with staff, it didn't cite a particular department, I don't think.
But am I to understand that means that we won't even be involved with it anymore? That you will keep it entirely within Public Works, or? John is, John is?
My understanding is that, that it would be entirely within Public Works and the arborist, and that the homeowner wants to appeal, they could come to the PROS commission, but we would not normally be involved with ones that are approved, have been on the consent calendar.
In pursuit of a variance, they'd come to us. If the standard code is followed by Public Works and they want a variance, they'd come to us.
Let's go on to agenda 4.7, Measure M updates, available fund balance and programming
Thank you. So the city currently has some Measure M funded projects. Measure M is a parks for all one-day cent sales tax that was approved by Sonoma County voters in 2010. The measure provides dedicated funding for 10 years, sunsetting in about 2028 to improve and expand parks operated by Sonoma County and nine municipalities within Sonoma County. The city of Sonoma is one of the smallest cities in Sonoma County with just over 3% of the countywide population, and it's currently estimating to receive approximately 150,000 in revenue for the '24, '25 fiscal year. So currently, the fund balance as of December 2nd is 542,173.43. This does not include anticipated revenue for Measure M yet, so that does not include the anticipated 150,000, which is an estimate. The fund balance, anticipated fund balance after you include the anticipated revenue is 692,173, and the expenses that we currently have programmed, such as Olson Parks, Sonoma Valley Oaks, Depot Park enhancements, and fire prevention at the Montini Trail, are
I have a quick question that is, may not be related to it, but I'm hoping it is, but, and it goes to Mike, too. I'm trying to, who actually is responsible also for kind of the, the tree placement and maintenance for the various bike trails? Do those fall under parks, recs, and open spaces, or not?
The city will maintain the bike trail trees. So if we, if somebody's going out there and planting them, it would be headed up by the city.
I, I was thinking of it relative to, and I'm not bringing up a new item, but obviously for tonight, but all of these trees that we're talking about, when you go on those trails, it's wonderful to have shade. And those are obvious places. Now, they're not the easiest places relative to care for the trees, I know, and watering and nurturing them and stuff, but I, I just think that's, that's a natural spot for that sort of thing.
John, were you going to report in on our meeting with the Sonoma County Parks?
I wasn't planning to. If you'd like to say something about it, I.
Oh, well, I was just going to mention that in regards to Measure M money and other factors, John and I and Karen Collins met with the director of Sonoma County Parks and the deputy director, and one of the things we came away with, they gave us a lot of insight as to what other municipalities do with their Measure M money and their application processes, et cetera. And we were advised that Petaluma has kind of the closest set of parameters, and so we talked about meeting with the Parks and Rec director, or was it that we were going to meet with Parks and Rec, or which counterpart at Petaluma were we talking about?
I think it was the Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, to see how they do it. How does Petaluma, you know, let people apply for Measure M? What do they do with it? They, they, a lot of these municipalities use a matching grant program. Dagon Open Space has a matching grant program. Just how does the money get delivered? And how can someone, you know, they, they have to come up with matching funds to get some of the Measure M money, things like that. So that's what we are kind of working on, on the, on the fringes.
Yeah, we did have that discussion, that suggestion, but anticipating the next agenda item, which is a report from the city manager on Measure T and the search for Parks and Recreation Director Department, it seemed that it would be best to wait until we see the progress on that and then begin to see how we're going to follow some of the recommendations, say of the Portera Group, which include looking for a robust way to promote community engagement in development of a Parks Master Plan. So we can look at other cities, and Santa Rosa and Petaluma have wonderful, uh, public engagement protocols that they follow, and so these are all things that we can look at when we begin to develop, I think with, with the new Parks Department, how are we going to use public input to develop a master plan? And that'll include Measure M money, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Any, any other comments on this item? No action is required, right, Kathy? So we will move on to?
One, one question. I, I didn't see the, the new park at Fisk Tree and MacArthur on this list.
I believe that's currently programmed with Quimby, I believe. And so that's why it's not included, it's not currently programmed in Measure M.
I think we're ready to go to correspondents, is that correct? And 5.1 on correspondents is a status update on the creation of a Parks and Recreation And we have a message here from the city manager, David Goode.
Yeah, has everyone had time to review the memo? And are there any questions on it? And any parts that you'd like to talk about?
I have several. Under the current progress evaluation of functions, the manager states that the staff is analyzing the scope of Parks Recreation and Community Service responsibilities to determine the areas of oversight for the Parks and Recreation Department and its director, and then goes on to say that it will be currently reviewing, recommending, and finding to the Community Parks Task Force that has since been dissolved to inform the department's structure and priorities and so forth. So I'm, the conclusion is that this seeks to streamline the services programs and provide cohesive approach to a better address the diverse needs of Sonoma residents. We welcome any input for feedback from members of the PROS commission or community partners as we move. from members of the PROS Commission or community partners as we move forward with this process. So I guess, you know, I raised this question with the City Manager. What, what can you tell us, what, as you suggest, how PROS can perform a, a role in this search, in this process to develop a new Parks and Recreation Department? At what point can we solicit public engagement, uh, public comment to sort of help guide, guide the process? For example, if there's going to be a search, a search for a Parks Director position, will we have a chance to review the, the job description, the scope of what's being asked for the new director? Will we have a chance to comment on that? I'm just not sure what our role is going to be as we move forward with this.
You started this by saying that you discussed this with the City Manager?
Mm-hmm.
And what was his response?
I believe it was to, I think it was not too clear to me.
I was at that conversation and David made it very clear that because it's a personnel issue, we're excluded from involvement in the city council is excluded from involvement. Not, not the job description and so forth, but the selection process.
Yeah, and that, that wouldn't surprise me.
But what's, what does the statement then, the conclusion mean? That we welcome any input and feedback from members of the PROS Commission or community and partners as we move forward with this process?
Well, now would be.
Where in the process are we welcome to make some comment?
Well, now would be a time that you could make a comment at this open meeting and it could get brought to his attention.
Which open meeting are we talking about?
Right now.
Well, we know nothing at this point because we don't.
No, but I mean, if you felt that you had a strong input about something that you wanted to see in this new department director, now would be a perfect time to discuss it, especially given in front of the commission. And see, maybe we could get some feedback to whatever your thoughts were.
I, yeah, I think the, the question is, I don't think we have any immediate thoughts right now till we, we just found out that this is going to be, what the timeline is from this statement. But so either we can do, do this in March when we meet next, or we can call a special meeting if you think that would be a way to focus on what our thoughts are and also solicit public comment on it.
Sure.
Can you, can you give us any sort of information as to what you'll be thinking about if you're, like what you're looking for in a candidate, what you're, I mean, I think what John might be saying is we welcome you to share with us any information that you are able to share so that we can.
Yeah, at this stage of the process, this is being handled by the City Manager's office.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
I think we're just requesting to review the job description and we can provide our input over email if needed.
Yeah, and basically a request could be made. And I believe that this request has already been made because Commissioner Tolbert said that there wouldn't be a role by the commission. Now, that doesn't mean the commission can't give input. But I think that if the commission is requesting to look at the job description prior to it being put out in a recruitment, that is a direct role. And I, I'm hearing that. I think the City Manager was pretty clear. Is that, is that correct, Commissioner Tolbert?
From what I'm reading here is he's going to draft a comprehensive, uh, job description. And I'm sure we'll be presented with that and if we want to make any suggestions or add-ons, but the selection process, we're not involved.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the job description won't be solicited. And so if the commission wants that, that should probably be requested. And then the City Manager can have the ability to respond to that. Cause this is a HR thing too. Yeah.
Yeah. Again, since we have had no public engagement since, since the end of the community task force, we haven't been any, any, any outreach for community input. And since we're supposed to representing the community then as, as volunteers on the commission, the question was just how do you see us, if, anyway, participating in a proactive, effective way to contribute to this process? I mean, we've been spending two years now thinking about Parks and Recreation and how we can be an advisory role to the council. And here we're going to just have a whole new department created and then we'll, we'll look at it. It's just seemed to me that, I guess I, my problem, it's always been, I come from 30 years of an academic background, so I'm not used to the Brown Act and all the city official functions. But all the search committees I've been on the past operated differently. But I'm coming from that, just kind of asking the question of how can we be included at all, even though man, the City Manager says, he makes the personal decisions at the direction of the council. But it seems that the PROS Commission should, should have some voice in this. And I just question.
And I guess I'm just a little bit surprised because you've had two meetings with him recently and this has been vetted. And I guess a third meeting should be scheduled.
I just had the one meeting, Mike. So, yeah. We've, we've met on each other's agenda. I, in the first meeting, I didn't show up. Forgot that the meeting was on.
Okay. Yeah. Well, that one and the second one that you attended. And I guess it's just getting a reconciliation and asking a comprehensive question and receiving a comprehensive answer to that would be what I would recommend.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we can't, I, I mean, I can't, I'm not involved in the process at this point. The City Manager is. And he would be the person I would ask if, again, if you didn't get the proper answer the first time or were unsure on the answer.
Well, thank you. I, I just raised it here because I just wanted to get my fellow colleagues on the commission here. They, they see it's the same way that we've, after two years that we seem to have so little request for any input and any way to look at what, how this process is going to unfold. And I understand that that's the way the city does business. I'm learning that as I, as we go along.
Yeah. Here again, I'm not sure about the two-year thing because Measure T just passed. And this is a very fresh topic that we're talking about.
I meant two years of the commission, Mike.
I, no, I understand. But in terms of this particular aspect, this is relatively fresh. It's a very new concept. And I think that, you know, making sure that if you have, if you want to meet with the City Manager and get a question answered, he's available. Yeah. And then here again, if the committee wants to look into any aspect and make a recommendation, by all means, I would suggest it. That's, he's, he's available to take input via email, via meeting, via a phone call, anytime. And that would be a real easy way to get, this is what I think a Parks and Rec Director should be focused on. I think here's these three things that are real important to me.
We did talk about at our meeting with the County Parks Director, that other municipalities have a master plan, a Parks and Rec master plan, and that they all do a lot more public, public engagement on these matters than we do. So I agree with you.
Anybody else on the commission want to weigh in on this one?
It's pretty obvious, I think. At, at the very beginning, just understanding the job description that he's going to put out would be an obvious thing for him to share with us. So I, I would want to make a formal request for that. You know, and, and again, I don't understand the protocols either at the city, but that's not, that's not like a private, they're just going to pull it off a database and create it through, through, through how they create those. I mean, I've done it myself. So, and then we can at least look at it, get an understanding of what the qualifications of the person is. But also we can highlight for their interview process, what we think are some of the key elements of importance to a successful outcome between the public and the Parks and Recs and Open Spaces.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a substantiative ask. It is. I think I, what I just heard, I think is something that if I was in your position, I would, you just said it. And.
What I'm hearing is you're saying, please go forth and ask the City Council.
I think, I think it's a, I think it's a very good point. And this is what, this is why I brought this up. And, you know, John, you're spearheading the discussion. And I think that these are the types of things that if any of the commissioners tonight had something similar, here's a great venue to discuss it at.
That's why I brought it up. So I'm, I'm happy for any discussion or, and we're learning, again, as with you, thank you for your guidance and patience on this. But it's, to me, it's a valid question for us as a PROS Commission to say, what, what are the expectations? And if we're just told, stay out of it, this, this is a city business, it just seems a little unproductive. Yeah.
The stay out of it part, I think, was just the selection, which sounds, it sounds pretty normal. That sounds pretty standard. But, I mean, maybe there's a way to invite all parties to, to CC us more, to communicate more with what's going on. So we're kind of not on a back foot as much. I don't know if there is a way, but just sometimes, you know, I message Jennifer about something and I realize they're actually working on something for us. And I don't, you know, I never knew. So you, without the information, we don't really know how to operate.
Yeah. And not knowing fully what the context of the meeting was, because I wasn't there, I just want to bring everybody's attention to the last sentence of this memo, which states, "If any members of the PROS Commission or any community partners aren't interested in providing input and thoughts on this process, please feel free to reach out to me at deguin@sonomacity.org." I mean, that's pretty clear to me.
Okay.
And very apparent.
Okay.
But here again, I think that having this discussion is a really good thing. And valid discussion feeds off valid discussion. There's a lot of brilliant minds up here from Parks, Recs and Open Space. And hearing people talk, it will initiate thought in other people and good comment and good collaborative communication.
Thank you.
I think it's important to clarify that I, I think we're, we're definitely going to have input on the job description and, and the expectations and what we want this role to fill. It's simply the interviewing process that we won't be involved in.
Yeah. And I, that we can reach out by email to the City Manager with the suggestions that you brought up that, and others may have, I think is, is fair. And that we understand that now. I appreciate the, the fog is lifting, I think. PROS comments, Open Space, Commission members, anybody have public comment?
I, I was a little unclear as to what next steps, if there are to be any, like what is next if in fact, we're going to maybe vote on the city staff handling tree removal permits, other than the variant or the appeals? I mean, what, what's next with that? Is that, that was brought up, but what's, what's coming of it? Is there anything going to happen? Should we talk about it? Is, when you vote on something, we need to?
That is tied into the ordinance amendment. So that's going to get taken care of when we update the, the ordinance. So that's certainly something that will be fleshed out.
So the ordinance as a whole?
When we do the, yes. It's part of the ordinance update. Yes.
So the ordinance amendment that we were talking about tonight, it's part of that?
Yes.
Or is it part of the grand ordinance re?
No, I believe it's part of the amendment, which is eventually going to get tied, obviously, into the, the big ordinance update. Yes.
So who, who does the footwork on that? Or what, what gets done? Or how does it get decided?
I would imagine that it would be discussed at the Joint Tree Committee. It would be something that, that, that committee would work on in collaboration with Public Works and Planning, because it is an ordinance update. And it does have a lot of planning specifics in it. So I, I, that's my understanding. And I talked to Jennifer Gates. That was also her understanding. However, given that you have initiated an update or recommenced, initiated a recommendation to City Council to update an ordinance along process. Then I will follow up with Jennifer tomorrow, let her know what was decided, and then we will discuss a path forward. But it's not something that we, we're just going to unilaterally do.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was something we needed to do on our side, but so it sounds like.
I have a few comments. I just wanted to first acknowledge that we, this has been the completion of our first two years of this new commission. And it's been a steep learning curve for all of us, especially for me as chair. And I think just all of us to learn ins and outs of the Brown Act, working together, working with the city staff, which we want to especially thank Mike and Kathy and, and Ashley for your work and patience with us and helping us out. Kathy's provided me as chair, wonderful annotated, step by step, how to do this. So that's, that's been helpful. And as you can tell, I'm still learning. So it's a work in progress of always. And a special thanks to my, my PROS commissioners who've been, who've gone from five to seven, which is great. And a special thanks to Jess and John Missouri for especially all the work you've done on the, on the, on the tree committee. About a year ago, last December, I was invited, I, we invited the Chair Connie Schlelin from the Culture Arts and Fine Arts Commission to do a presentation to PROS. And we learned that that commission had a vision to make Sonoma, had a vision statement making Sonoma Valley a world-class arts and cultural destination. And they had matched that with, the commission had matched it with goals and cultural planning. And they developed a menu of short-term, midterm and long-term action items. And so last, last month, I was invited to give a, a PROS presentation back to the Culture and Fine Arts Commission. And I noted that that commission is 41 years old. It started in 1983. So they have a huge track record and a long, much longer learning period. We've, we've in two years are just getting started, as we said. We've accomplished quite a bit here in the first, since we've met a year ago, or two years ago, starting in March 2023. So going forward, I think our, our PROS Commission is now in a much better position to move more actively and proactively in contributing to the priorities of our city's Parks and Recreation Program. I think also that we're, we're in really good shape for a number of reasons, because we're going to have a new Parks and Recer Department and a new Director. We're going to have a chance to really develop a master plan for the parks. We're going to be able to hopefully layer in a green and blue infrastructure element that the Planning Commission is working with to be inlaid in the general plan. And that would be a great guide for both the Parks Master Plan and where trees go, et cetera. And it also, it will help promote more robust, uh, public engagement in that process. The City Manager just recently agreed that, and starting in January, who will have a monthly meeting with all the Chairs of the City Commissions, together with the City Mayor and the City Clerk, so that we can begin to see, get out of our commission silos and see where we have overlapping cross-coordinating issues and projects that would be more efficient, uh, work for everybody if we can work, work more carefully together. And again, the general plan and the green infrastructure overlay would be a great assist to that. And so the City Council's going to have a goal setting and for next year on January 30th. And I would hope in March, once we know what those city goals are, that we as a commission could then begin to think about what our goals and work plans might be that would help best address our, our advisory role to the council on those, on those goals. So having said all that, I'm going to rotate myself off as Chair of the Commission going forward. I think it's, it's time. I always felt it's really good to share the, the leadership of a group like this. And there's a lot of talent and experience here that we can all benefit. So I feel like this is a handoff and a relay. I'll stay on the commission, of course, but I think it would be great to have somebody else step forward and take, to crack at being chairing the, of the commission. I welcome that opportunity to, to work with you. And then if anybody would like to discuss, meet with me. I meet for coffee one-on-one, so we don't do a Brown Act violation. If you want to talk about your interest and ideas for the PROS Commission and the questions about how it is to be a Chair for a commission, I would welcome that opportunity to discuss with you. with you. And also, of course, you can check with the, our distinguished Public Works Staff here for suggestions, too. So, in March, first thing on our agenda, as I understand it, will be to elect a new Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission. And I will be happy to pass the, the gavel here to whoever that will be. But I appreciate this chance to work with you all and appreciate your patience and understanding as I try to find out how best to do this. And I look forward to collaborating with you going forward.
John, you are superb Chair, as you were with the Sonoma Overlook Trail, and your skills have only blossomed more. And we will be sad to see you go, but we're glad we're staying on the Commission.
Think we can have a call for adjournment? Or should I just adjourn?
Staff comments.
Pardon? Oh, staff comments. Yes, indeed.
The only staff comment we had tonight was announcing that the City unfortunately did not get the Cal Fire Grant. I think Chair Donnelly, you, you touched on that earlier tonight. The City did not get the Cal Fire Grant for their Urban Forestry Management Plan, and so they're now moving forward with an alternative. It will be a, a little less funded than what had been asked for in the Cal Fire Grant, but just to provide an update on that. So, that RFP is out and advertised with a closing date of January 14th.
And then also the other staff report out. I just wanted to thank the people that were associated with putting this work together. This has been a lot of work. Staff has been involved and there was a lot of discussion tonight about too much information, not enough information. I think that what we've presented is a really good blend of everything. And it's got a lot of information, but if you take and put in a tree in front of your house seriously, you should consult this list because that's a big deal and it requires a lot of work. And there's information on here about heavy fruit drop. There's information about every little different aspect of a lot of these, a lot of these trees. And so, I want to thank everybody that was associated with that. And then also, while I was sitting here, I jumped on the City's website. And if you just hop in the search bar and you type in "request for," all the different RFPs will come up from the main search bar. And the RFP for the Tree Canopy, Comprehensive Tree Inventory and Urban Tree Canopy Mapping is right there. All you have to do is click on it. It'll take you right to the page. The RFP is right there. And then also, one of the things that came up tonight was the Council Goal Setting Session. While you're at that search bar, type in "Council Goal Setting." And there's a PowerPoint presentation on there that'll give you a lot of information about what that goal setting session's about. And also, all the, the public is invited to attend that. So, that's a real easy spot for you to sit down with the Council. It's not one-on-one, but it's pretty darn close. They're right there. There's times for people to give their input and a lot of good information. So, thank you again for being on this Commission. And I concur with everything Chair Donnelly said. Chair Donnelly, thank you again for doing this and getting us started off on the right foot. And thanks, everybody else, for all the effort because it's not easy. It takes time and I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
March 12th is the next meeting.
March 12th.
Yeah. Just thought I'd throw it out there. I know you were saying March. I just want to wrap that up.
Jared, I didn't get a chance to thank you for being here on our Commission for two years. So, I really appreciate it. What, can you tell us a little bit about where you are in your life and what's coming up?
Um, so, yeah, and thank you, of course. You've done an amazing job as Chair and going through all this. I know I wouldn't have done anywhere near as well or as you've done. In terms of school, I'm applying to a bunch of colleges. I've mostly done all of them in terms of early action. UCs just went out, so all the University of Californias, Berkeley, UCLA, Santa Barbara, Davis, most of those. And it's just been applying to a bunch of colleges. And I'm going to hear back from Stanford, should be next week, but it's going to slowly come rolling in in terms of those.
Great. Well, be sure to let us know when you know what you're going to do.
Mechanical engineering. So, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Hearing no further comments on, from anybody, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:21.